I'd like to call the order of the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 10th, 2019. Would please stand and pay your respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, roll call. Can I have the rule or the rule noted?
Noted.
Mr. Humwick is excused for this evening. Item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the Charter Township of Oxford Regular Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 10th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Removed and seconded any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. You get a bit rusty here and there. Item number five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting of meeting minutes from September 12th, 2019. I'll second that.
Removed and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item number six, public comments on items that are not scheduled for public hearing or that are not on this agenda, is there one on the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to item seven, commissioner's comments. Jack?
Yes, I have several. Last night, the township board approved $750,000 for the 18-inch sewer line going up M-24 during the reconstruction. We also okayed $55,000 for the design of the water line from Tullamore to east of M-24 after they bring the water line under the M-24 during the reconstruction. Also, East Drainer Road has been ditched and tree removed for vision, line of sight, and they're in the middle of gravelling it, and they've begun the work on Davison Lake Road to the west of M-24 with gravel and ditching to improve the road. I'm gonna read something here that I read last night at the township board meeting. Recently, we were approached to sponsor a Brownsfield grant to remediate lead contamination on the House of Providence property. I've been doing some research and talked to legal experts, Eagle, and I wanna let you know what my findings are. While there's more to follow, these three items identified as why I would not sponsor this action, and I read this at the township board meeting last night. Number one, currently, the property is compatible with our zoning and land use ordinance. At the same time, the landowner has application to change legislation in Lansing to the number of individuals they will house from six to 10, making it now non-compatible with our zoning. Number two, the Charter Township of Oxford would have to assume all liabilities and responsibilities of the remediation. In other words, if something goes wrong or happens, Eagle would come after the township. Number three, policy. According to Eagle, the property has been remediated except for one parcel where the hazard materials have been stockpiled. I feel we don't want to make, take $1 million of state funding grants to make one parcel clean so the applicant gets work done to one parcel while other areas in the state that are of higher need than this endeavor. We're watching for our attorney's opinion. He gave a brief one that got out to the public, and it kinda paraphrases what I found out, but we are not going to be seeking the application for that Brownsfield grant.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Knoll?
Last night's board meeting, there was mentioned very briefly that the utilities will be working on M-24 earlier than what, next March, and that there'll be daily closings. Mr. Dunn was not happy with that, thought they could do their work at nighttime, but that wasn't gonna happen. So, we're gonna start seeing activity on 24 sooner than later.
Okay. Mr. Berger?
I have none at this time.
Stuff?
Had a nice chat with somebody that lives out on Barber Road a couple of weeks ago. It was just, it was positive. We were able to talk in an amicable and friendly way, hear each other's thoughts on different matters, and part of this good neighbors.
Good. Mr. Spiz?
No comment.
Yeah, I have no comments. Move to item eight, public hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 67A regarding Article 2, Section 2. Definitions, Article 3.4, intent of districts, Article 3, Section 5, schedule of use regulations, C1, local commercial, and C2, general commercial, Article 5, use regulations, and add a new section, 5.35, restaurant, outdoor, cafes, and patio.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Well, I'm gonna have the petitioner open with a few comments first, and then we'll open to public comments. Lauren, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. Yes, before you, you have the latest version of the cafe and patio amendments that alter a number of sections throughout the ordinance. The purpose, as we've discussed now a couple of times, is to add separate requirements and zoning district designations for a outdoor patio as well as an outdoor cafe, and the difference of those are listed in the definitions and with the special use requirements as outlined in the new section of 5.35. We took into consideration input from the attorney. The ordinance review committee has met multiple, many times, on this to make it as tight and as encompassing as possible as we see fit, and we hope that if you have questions or comments, we can answer them for you tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for comments.
I'll second that.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone out in the public wishing to speak on this item, you're welcome to come up to the lectern, give your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Mary Ann Kane, Stony Lake Village Condos of Waterstone, Board President. And I'm here this evening in regards to some of the scenarios that I didn't think was covered by the material that I saw for the new section, 5.35, cafes and patios, and that's what my concerns revolving around that verbiage is in that section. Just in general, when I think of, when I look at cafes and patios, I look at a cafe as a more intimate setting, and a patio as a more larger encompassing. So, when I looked at the proposed verbiage for this new ordinance, I thought it was reversed. I thought that the way you have it, cafes, is a little more encompassing, and the patio is more limited. So, just in general, and might just be me, I kind of would've reversed those, because like I said, I think of a patio as a lesser level, and, I mean, excuse me, a cafe as a lesser level, and a patio as a more encompassing, larger scenario. But, given that, as it is stands, I find it very cumbersome and very difficult to interpret and understand the language as it's set out. And I thought some of the areas that perhaps maybe we could add to that, that I didn't see those scenarios covered in the current verbiage, is if you have a building whose primary purpose is not a restaurant, but they have cafes and patios, how do you address that? Because there is a business in Oxford Township that's primary purpose is not a restaurant, and they have cafes, and they have patios, and I wonder if that might have a little influence on a different scenario when reading the ordinance as written now, that that isn't really covered. Also, I didn't think there was coverage for an establishment that has more than one cafe or patio within its property lines. There is a current business in Oxford Township that has several different scenarios. As defined this evening, seeing the verbiage, it has multiple cafes, it has a patio, and it also has something which is by main entrance, you have a gas grill, and you have a bistro set. So, when I, I don't see anything revolving gas grills out on patios or cafes, and a bistro set at a main entrance, which personally, I think that's a safety issue. I wouldn't have a grill and someone cooking at a main entrance into a building myself, because if there should be a fire, that would certainly not allow patrons to get out safely. But, that scenario also exists, and I do not see that currently covered by the ordinance verbiage as presented this evening. There is some regards about the parking lot safety, I saw about barriers and things to protect some of the patrons or people going to and from their vehicles, and those sitting in cafes or patios, but I thought maybe it needed to be a little bit more stressed in regards to barriers, whether that be landscaping, fencing, and the safety of patrons in those cafes and patios. So, those were some of the thoughts that when I reviewed the verbiage that came to mind, and I appreciate your time and consideration, and perhaps looking at encompassing those in some way into this ordinance as written. And again, just in general, just looking at what I think as a township resident, what I would consider a cafe, and then what I would see as a patio, it's kind of vice versa written in the ordinance. So, I don't know, maybe you'll share some of your, the committees' discussions on that, and maybe I'm not seeing it that way, but I just wanted to give you my perspective on what I saw this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
I'm sorry, Mary, you had one more comment, Chairman Young. I forgot about TVs. There was no mention of TVs. There's talk about music, amplified music, but there was no verbiage in regards to TVs on the patio or the cafe definitions, and I think that needs to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no one else out in the public? I'll take a motion to close the public.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Removed and seconded, supported. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. We'll now take comments from township consultants and our staff. Lauren, did you have anything else to add?
Sure. The, well, just to clarify, the definition of the cafe and the patios are the difference there, rather, what a cafe is, is really, what we intended was to focus on the service of food and drinks, that a patio is really a patio. It could be a slab of concrete with some tables and chairs, and that's something that maybe an ice cream place would put out, or a fast food restaurant would put out, where there's no table service, there's no music, there's no real ambience beyond just kind of the basics. And the intention of us differentiating those two, with the cafe having the table service, possibly drink service as well, is that a cafe requires much more stringent regulations. And so, that's where, at Section 5.35, that's where those regulations are gonna, are intended to be housed. And a patio would still require zoning compliance, but they would require a zoning compliance permit. And the main difference between those two administratively is not only the process that goes through, special land use for a cafe would require planning commission approval and almost a $6,000 application fee, right? And a patio, where it would be tables and chairs, could be approved by the zoning administrator. And there's, of course, regulations they would have to adhere to as well, however, that is the difference of $125. So, quite a difference for the intensity of use and the process that they would go through, and that's why we had two separate things like that.
Thank you. That makes more sense.
Okay.
That makes me understand why you define things.
Separately, right, right, yeah. Yeah, and we did, I will say also that we did take recommendations, we talked about this a lot, because we wanted to make sure that we were going to be regulating and protecting the residents, neighboring residents, that may be near one of these cafes, whereas a patio, of course, as I said, would have less, have less restrictions, but a less intense use is what it would. So, with the cafe, we did go in after we originally, after the commission originally approved this amendment, we went back to it and added in times that they could operate so to limit how late they could go. Also, the amplified music, we restricted that completely as to not put in, because there is a noise ordinance that restricts how loud you can be. However, the enforcement of that, we thought, might be a little, a little too questionable for some of these uses, so we restricted the noise completely on that. And then we put in some other things as well to try to make it more compatible with residential uses and other neighboring uses.
Okay, good. I suspect, Jim, you don't have anything on it, right?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I don't have any correspondence on it either, so I'll take any comments or questions or feedback from committee members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I think Lauren did an excellent job explaining what we went through, because it was critical to us, like, for example, you bring a checkers onboard, and they have a little outdoor patio, and people go up and they order their food, and then they go sit down with it. We weren't trying to restrict certain business aspects similar to that. We wanna welcome them to the community.
Correct.
With the idea of a cafe, and the restriction to noise and loud music and what it can cause for an area, if there is someone nearby that can be affected, we spent a lot of time in that area trying to make sure that we thought of the citizens and how we can handle that, and how they have to come through the approvals process to get that. So, that's where, when they have to come to us and expedite their documents in a manner that tells us exactly what they're gonna do, then we can control those values and be better, and be better for the community that way. So, we took a lot of attorney opinion, and some we disagreed with the attorney on, but then we answered all the questions back to the attorney and how we handled it in the description of what we wrote into the order, just so everybody knows that, too.
That's good.
Okay.
Lauren?
I, yeah, I wanna add as well, something that I think is important to point out, is that because a cafe is a special land use, the recommend, the approval by the planning commission is a recommendation to the board. And when the special land use is considered by the township board, the township board will also consider, if alcohol is proposed on this patio, they will also have to consider amending their current alcohol license and liquor license, so that special precautions are taken at that point. The planning, it will come through the planning commission, and planning commission can approve or deny, and if it is approved, it will go to the board who will have the final say of that, and they will have more things to take into consideration of that. So, it's really doubly protecting the impact that those businesses would have.
Okay, good. Aside? Good.
Oh, questions?
Questions?
I do have questions.
Okay.
If you're ready, if you're ready for them. Why seasonal restriction? What's, what's the basis of having a seasonal restriction on it? I mean, if it's just weather, that's really up to the owner of it, so I'm just looking, what was the rationale by putting that in place?
Mr. Curtis?
You know, what happened in the village was, when they did the outside dining, they did it seasonally because of snow removal, like on M-24, pushing it into the sidewalks and building. It's more of a maintenance of outdoor, snow, sleet, that kinda stuff. That's what I would think.
And I guess I could understand that from a village perspective, because they, they do a lot of that themselves, whereas in the township, we do not. It's really up to the business owner to take care of that, in my opinion. Unless there's a case where that is different, there might be. I'm just wondering why a restriction, other than weather?
Well, honestly, I guess the idea that comes to mind is because of how we operate throughout the state with summer and winter activities, I guess that's what we probably anticipated, this being more of a conditioned weather situation, or weather, and I know what you're saying, that weather really does, may not have a play in it.
Correct.
And so, you could have an outdoor situation in the wintertime, which I really didn't think about.
What you're getting at is if you went to Culvers and you, they had two or three igloos out on their patio, existing patio?
Yeah.
Then they clear pathways to them, you could eat inside the igloo?
Correct.
Well, most igloos are not approved for construction.
I thought he was just using that as a, so.
It's hypothetical.
It happened in a couple other communities.
I got it, Mike.
Or if somebody's building a cafe and they wanna put tarps around, or clear tarping around it to sit outside?
Special use.
Agreed, but, does it make sense for us to restrict it, just in my opinion, based on weather?
I'd really have trouble with that, I guess. I mean, I don't know.
Because I'm sure there's ideas out there we're not thinking of, but.
Things can always be amended again, you know?
Right.
Bring up to mind somebody putting a tent up for the whole winter.
I understand.
Yeah.
Chief?
What's the, the beginning of the season, the spring?
April 1st.
April 1st, October 31st.
That eliminates all the ones in the village currently doing it right now, but I mean, I believe they, for St. Patrick's Day party, because generally, it has been that for, and where it's been working for, St. Patrick's Day, they have to take it off the, or in the winter time, they even have a special festival, so, special event.
That's true. Any of those would qualify for a temporary use permit, which would be different.
It doesn't mean they can't come in and apply for a temporary use on those dates.
Right.
It's just that we didn't have it in there for year round.
Would they have to then apply or have a special application for that special permission from the day of, so, additional costs?
It would be.
So, if you've already had it approved for seasonal, how do you have to pay a gift?
Right.
It's another way to regulate. We're just trying to make sure we don't create something down the road that becomes a nuisance.
Yeah, I think.
We're very conscientious of that.
In the case of Culvers or, you know, an igloo like that or something, in those cases, those would be considered patios, so that would be.
Not under a cafe.
That would not be under a cafe, although the patios are subject to those requirements if we.
Correct.
Right.
All of them are.
Yeah. We did not, and this, this talks about that we did not put in here whether or not those could be waived by the planning commission, and maybe that's what, that's what we're looking for, is some language about whether it could be waived.
During the special use application?
Uh, well, special land use or patio, or for the patio would be, patio would be a permitted use, but if the planning commission or the zoning.
I would rather word it differently than waiving something. I would rather have the applicant apply for a certain duration of time versus us waiving anything.
Well, if it's listed as a requirement like this, you would, it would either have to be waived.
Understand.
Right, right, so, or it could be taken out. But, to be honest with you, I don't see where, I mean, especially in the winter like that, when everyone's windows are closed, I don't see as how that could be a greater nuisance by allowing them in another time of the year.
So, kind of, that's kinda why I asked the question myself.
Right, right.
Odds are, most probably wouldn't do it during the majority of that time.
Yeah.
It could still be a special permit to do it.
Right.
You expanded that seasonal restriction to March, November.
But then, at that point, why not just take it away? Just open it right up, and just ask, have them apply for what they think they want? Because I, I mean, there might be some businesses out there that, you know, December is the month they throw most of their events, and they might wanna have an outside event.
I will say really quick, this, giving a season, giving a time period, does require a period of them to clean it up and to be done with. So, if you were to leave it open all year long and they wouldn't use it in the winter, they would, I guess, be allowed to leave it out over the winter, whatever it is, if you would, for snow removal or what have you.
Curtis?
It sounds like we're all battling Mr. Spiz. We could either take that out, or understand that if somebody does want to have a St. Patrick's Day event, they could apply for a special permit.
Or you can move it back to March 15th and cover it all together for that example.
You can. Switch your flavor.
March, November?
I'd like to see it at a minimum, expanded, if not removed. So, we can come to an agreement in the middle and expand it slightly.
Move April to March?
Move April 1st to March 1st? Do you think that'd help you?
Yeah, that'd help me. And my only issue with October 31st.
You know, I'm gonna be, I'll be all right. I'll just speak up.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
In my past, and where I worked, and what we had to do in March, and everything we went through with the fire marshal and all the people and the establishments that had to be visited, and the extra workload that went with it, it's a lot of work in that month to do everything that needs to be done, and a lot of it boils around St. Patrick's Day. So, literally, when I had April 1st in there, I said, "We're good," in my mind. So, I guess if you guys wanna go to March, it's gonna be someone else on this group doing it, not me.
Okay.
I guess, define me.
If you wanna come in and ask for a special use, then fine, they have the right to do it. For those periods of time that aren't listed within this.
I have other questions.
Framework, don't ask me. Mr. Spiz?
I just have more of a formatted question. If you look at the top paragraph, the last sentence.
Of 5.35?
5.35, I'm sorry. It says, "And subject to the following requirements," added with a date there, but then it has another sentence in there. I'm assuming you mean the requirements below that?
Yes, that's the section. It will look different when it's in the ordinance.
Oh, okay, because I would say following, I would say below requirements versus that, instead of following?
Yeah.
Following, yeah.
Which is the order just looked.
The way you looked at it, yeah.
Yep. Okay, that was my only question.
Any other discussion?
Okay, then I would look to see a motion.
Based upon the draft zoning ordinance text amendments to add regulations to restaurant use definition categories, special land use regulations, and add at C1, local commercial, intent of district provisions as shown, as received from the township planner and as advised by the township attorney, and ref, and as reflected in the minutes of this meeting, I move that the planning commission recommend to the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance amendments. Number one, Article 2, Section 2 definitions. Number two, Article 3, Section 4, intent of districts. Number three, Article 3, Section 5K, schedule of use regulations, C1, local, commercial, and C2, general commercial. Number four, and add five use regulations to add Section 35, restaurant, restaurant, outdoor, cafes, and patio, under the condition with removing, or moving of the seasonal time date changed to read March 1st instead of April 1st. End of motion.
I second that. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion passes. You need a roll call?
I would say so, yeah, there's a recommendation for a change of ordinance.
Mr. Berger, you do a roll call for me, please?
I will. Mr. Spiz?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Ms. Knopf?
Yes.
I'm absent. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Berger, nay. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business. Item number nine, I'd like to move to item 10, new business, preliminary site plan. Applicant Carl Monaco, the manners of Westlake. I'm sorry, Monaco.
Monaco.
The manners of Westlake. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd step up to the lectern, state's name, and just a brief synopsis of what you're applying for.
My name is Carl Monaco, 48635 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Sorry to destruct it.
That's okay.
Right?
I've heard worse.
Oh, sorry.
And called worse. Basically, we're preliminary site planning, Westlake. Um, basically, we're preliminary site planning, Westlake of Waterstone, the final phase, 68 lots. Um, I guess the zoning allows us to build 60-foot wide lots. We're requesting minimum 90-foot throughout. Our goal is to get a little higher-end home based on the topography and the features, which includes, uh, you know, the west side of the lake. Uh, we think it's going to be a very, very desirable area, and we're looking forward to pursuing. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, let's, um, let's get some comments from our planner and the engineer. Uh, obviously, have you received those comments as well?
Just now.
So maybe we'll go through some of those and then we'll see what we can get answered by you here, um, in front of the commission, and then the commission will discuss and have suggestions as well. So Lauren, let's start with, well, let's, alright, let's start with Mr. Sharp.
Oh, Lauren, ladies first, that's fine.
Ladies first.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, forget about me way down here on the end.
I know, that's the way it looks.
Uh, we'll just start by saying that this proposed development, although it's changed names, um, kind of mimics a plan that was done with the original Waterstone development back from 1999. Not a whole lot of change that I could see on there. Plans, again, you know, we don't know if this is going to be a condominium or a plat- my guess is that it's going to be a condominium, so they need to address that item. Um, they'll need some of their engineering approvals and permits as they work through the process. Couple of the items that we had just in general, have your engineer moved the storm and sanitary manholes? You can't have them in the sidewalks and the crosswalks that are there. Uh, there wasn't really a, or the preliminary green plan wasn't, not included with that submittal, but I can kind of tell what's going on here with the ponds and things like that. It's not required at this stage. But I can get a feel for what's going on there and knowing the, the topography of the land as it is. Uh, there is an existing agent sanitary sewer at the end of Westlake Avenue. Uh, this sewer has sufficient capacity to support the proposed development. Uh, the applicant is proposing to install new public gravity sewers throughout the proposed development to service the lots. Everything basically flows to the north and it ends up in a pump station that's down on West Bayshore Drive. Um, and again, we just comment that he'll need his permits through the state of Michigan for those. Uh, water distribution, uh, the applicant is proposing to connect to the existing water main stub on Westlake and West Bayshore and extend water main through the development. Again, it does, we do have enough capacity in the water system to support this development. Uh, the water main, though, was shown stopping short, uh, of the existing 16-inch water main that's on Dunlap Road, so we're going to make them connect to that. Um, the existing water main on Westlake is, they noted as an 8-inch, it's actually a 12-inch there. Likewise, there's, it's going to connect, it comes from, uh, South Shore Drive, if you guys know where that is. Up on the hill there, it comes down behind some of the holes and connects in, it'll be done by the cul-de-sac on Westlake Court. Uh, I don't think that that's accurately shown right now, so I think that their engineer needs to do a little bit of work to bring the plans up to snuff, but all in all, I, I think it's very doable from that end. As far as the stormwater, uh, plans north, that stormwater drainage is going to go, is going to outlet to Westlake, Waterstone Lake. Um, we'll need to see all those calculations and so forth, that it's not going to negatively impact the lake, raise the lake level, anything like that, when they discharge their stormwater to that. Through some of the other significant items. Again, I think as Mr. Monaco, if he can relay this information regarding the storm sewer to his engineer, we can, uh, work through all the calculations and so forth to, to make it work. Through permits, pavement, sidewalks, and curbing. Uh, the applicant's proposing about 4,000 linear feet of new roadway throughout the development. Vehicular access to the site is provided from the gravel portion of Dunlap via the new approach, uh, and at the southwest corner, or in the southwest corner of the site. And basically, like we said on the other ones, we'd really like for them to pave that portion of the road. I'm excited about this development because I'm going to be able to travel 200 feet on a gravel road, and then I'm going to drive through Westlake, and I'm going to be on drive-through. I can see this being a lot of cut-through traffic getting into the Waterstone development myself. Again, it's our position, we cannot force the developer to do that based on attorney's opinions, but I'm certainly going to encourage that again. Uh, they are showing that there'd be 5-foot sidewalk, uh, on both sides of the roads, which is a great thing. And ultimately, uh, we are recommending preliminary site plan approval of this. Oh, one more thing, uh, safety path. They didn't show the safety path on the plan. There is going to be a requirement to extend the safety path from where it currently terminates across the entire frontage of your property there. But we are recommending preliminary site plan approval.
It's across Dunlap?
Excuse me?
Across Dunlap.
Across Dunlap, yep, across that frontage there, yep, exactly.
So far, so good?
Have no problems with anything he said.
Including the paving?
The road?
Nope.
Oh, with the exception of that?
That's the one where I, my hearing aid doesn't work very well, but in answer to a couple of questions, it will be a master deed. Um, obviously, we'll go through the master deed process with your attorneys and make sure that all of our deed restrictions meet your satisfaction.
Lauren?
Yes, I have some similar comments. Um, let me just say, this is in the R1A district. This is the final piece of the Waterstone development. All of the building envelopes have been provided on the site plan and each meet the dimensional requirements of the district. I did want to say as well that the natural feature setback is not shown on the site plan, the 25-foot buffer, um, from Waterstone Lake, and that should be shown on there as well. Um, and, and again, we can't make you do this, but we did have concern about the, the, um, uh, backyards running into the lake with, um, and I know this is a, a concern that we have for all of the homes in the Waterstone development that probably fertilize their yards and allow all of that to run off into the lakes. That will be an issue at some point in all of these developments and the, the water quality of those lakes will be, so, um, you know, let me take the opportunity to encourage you to put some sort of filtration, natural filtration system of, you know, wildflowers or some sort of rain gardens to filter that water as it goes into the lake. Um, that's, that's definitely, um, a form of remediation that could be done by the homeowners or by the, um, through the, through the deed. So that is a concern for us, we just want to say that. Um, I do want to say regarding access and circulation, um, also, the condition of Dunlap is not great. It could be a detriment to the residents, the dust that it generates as well for 68 new homes, it's a, it's a lot of traffic. Um, so we also encourage you to, um, think about paving and, um, taking care of Dunlap, um, in that way. Also, the sidewalks throughout the, uh, neighborhood are fantastic, uh, but there is the, the safety path requirement as well. So we, we want to highlight that. Let me say that by way of landscaping, lighting, um, those items appear to be in compliance. Of course, you will have, have greater requirements when we get to the, uh, final site plan review process. And I think that is the extent of my concerns, I'm just...
Don't take that map down, whether she has, I'd like to ask you the question of the one that showed the property.
Mine?
Right there.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Uh, I'm Jack.
Um, Carl, and we had conversation, Bill Dunn and I, with Carl about the property line, and as indicated on the map, the, the lake lots don't, do not have lake access, is that correct?
No, they do.
They have it?
The, the lot line is the lake on those lots.
So they have riparian rights to use the lake?
Everyone in Waterstone has...
That's not true.
Well, we have access in multiple locations, um, way in the front to get access.
But each lake lot owner does not allow to put docks, is not allowed to use irrigation, is not allowed to access the lake from the front of their property. Because see that red line going around there? Is that taken off, uh, Oakland County map?
Yeah, it is. That's where their property ends, it does not extend into the lake.
That's what I'm concerned with, Carl. You need to make sure that you understand that this, even on your print here, you see this line going up here?
Yeah.
That could be the boundary for the property lines. So in your deed restrictions, your homeowners, please address that because it, it could be a problem in the future, this line right here.
Yeah, it's the dotted line.
Yeah, that's the property line.
Slash line.
No. That's a traverse line.
That's just an intermediate traverse line, that's all it is. But the lot actually goes to the water's edge each time.
Right.
So the description of the lot goes here, goes here.
They do have access to the lake?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Has, has everyone in Bay Village and...
And all the rest around the corner, even on, uh, West Bayshore.
Correct.
They all have access to the water line.
Exactly.
They still have to meet all the setback requirements from Lake's edge.
We have...
Let's have access to Waterstone Lake. We pay attention, just, I'm sorry to intervene, just to make a note, they would be also part of the Waterstone Master, they would have paid their annual Waterstone Master dues.
Okay.
Which is, Waterstone Lake is, um, one of the community lakes in Waterstone that we all have to pay.
I just want to ensure that we have this understanding before you come back and all of a sudden we find out it doesn't. Because there are a couple of those lakes in there that are property line in front, by the lake, not on the lake.
Well, there's a, there's a feeder lake up above.
Right.
You can see at the top of your screen. Those lots don't go to that. There is a buffer between those because of, because of the safety issue, because it drops off. And that's considered a master, um, common element.
Yes.
So in those lots, on the top of your, uh, diagram, they do not go to the water's edge, but on Waterstone Lake, they do.
I just want to make sure when I buy lot 14, I'm going to have the water access.
Right.
And, and...
It's a nice lot.
No dock. Yes, we...
Let me ask you this. Some people do. What prevents anybody from putting a dock out there then?
For deed restrictions.
There, there is the Master Association bylaws that restrict what you can do and not do on that lake. They're already in force.
We'll see those when they come in.
And we, we can reduce those and we can reiterate them in our master deed to make sure that no one is under the wrong impression as far as docks and things like that.
Okay, in five years, as long as we can cover that, because we had an issue on Dool Lake not too long ago.
Right.
And we don't want to duplicate that.
And I will say, in the CAD, the original PUD, which was called the, um, CAD at the time, it does state in 1999 that the individual developers have to make those restrictions, that it is up to the individual developer. So it is possible that docks are allowed on some of those lakes if those were not written into the restrictions. I just want to say that. So if you want to restrict that, make sure it's in there.
We will, but I think I agree with this lady.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, that the Master Association does restrict that.
Does restrict it.
This is the time that we talk about this stuff, so we get it out.
Let me ask you this, too. Do they also restrict changing or altering the coast line? Is that what you call coastline? No. Shoreline?
That, that's a DEQ issue.
No.
If you touch that shoreline, you'll, you'll...
Oh, yeah.
They'll be all over you.
Okay. I'm curious if the, because they'll have to supply their master deed bylaws and everything. There's this overarching Waterstone master deed or whatever. Does that also have to be amended in any particular way, or is...
I wouldn't think so, as long as we follow it. We, we can maybe make it an attachment to our master deed.
You should at least reference it.
Yes, we will definitely reference it.
It'll probably be referenced in your master deed. It'll reference the higher one.
Right.
I didn't know if it took the signatures of all the other association presidents or something in order to amend that or not.
It probably would, and that's why it'd be very cumbersome to try to amend it, which we wouldn't be doing.
Right.
There are multiple amendments to it already. I think when they added, uh, the golf course did a little work, and they, with stormwater retention, and they had to amend the ma- I remember having to sign an amendment to the Master Association, but it hasn't been touched in probably 15 years.
And speaking of the golf course, I didn't really comment on it here, but you realize that some of their cart paths are on your property. They encroach onto some of those units down there, units, uh...
Maybe we can convince them to pave Dunlap Road in exchange for letting them use my cart paths.
Just letting you know.
Okay.
There's either going to have to be some sort of a...
I'm going to let Mr. Curtis address that issue.
Some sort of agreement or something, because these people are probably not going to want golf cart paths on their property, if you buy units eight or, uh, five or six down on that end.
Okay, let's go to, uh, the chief. Your concerns?
The street name of Kingswood, as shown on the drawing, is in direct conflict with the street that we have called King Wood, so I would definitely request that they come up with a different name for that street. Um, no parking, fire lane signs shall be posted on the fire hydrant side of the streets, so there will be no parking on the fire hydrant side of the streets, or requesting on every development that comes before you to make sure that it doesn't happen. And again, the same thing that Engineer Sharp called out, the water main on Westlake Avenue, um, shall be connected to the existing 16-inch main there on Dunlap, because the drawing shows it coming up just short of that, so I'm not sure whether there was an oversight or, or what that was. And then the, um, on Westlake Drive and Westlake Court, by lot number 11, the spacing of the hydrants are farther than 500 feet apart, so that, they need to be adjusted on that. Straight to come up with the proper spacing and you'll get that onto the engineering where I must be doing it.
Correct.
Any issues there, Carl?
None.
Um, I don't think there's, uh, anything from the Oakland County Sheriff's, uh, nothing from the Parks and Rec. So commissioners' comments, questions, concerns?
Only one comment, and I brought it up earlier before the meeting, but, uh, Mr. Monaco knows that we have changed the ordinance for side entrance garages for the minimum setback requirements. And with his lot sizing, he says that he doesn't see any problems with that change, I asked him. And, um, just for the record, I mean, some of them are a little tight. I mean, there, there's some in the front that are only, uh, 48 feet and 20-some feet, and then some are only 78 feet, some are 68, some are, and then a lot of them are 90 and, and such. But I can see a couple areas where it might be a little tight to put some in depending on, and who's going to regulate houses on there? You're going to sell these lots to anybody that wants to buy?
I'm thinking of keeping them.
Oh, yourself?
Yes.
So you'd be the one that regulates those entrance?
Correct. What we do is we establish a master driveway plan, so we don't have driveways on driveways. So we, we kind of regulate that internally ourselves, because obviously, you don't want driveways butting to each other.
We got some.
Don't want it.
Well, we, I'd really not have more, because they have almost always caused a problem.
Sometimes with negative planning, where you get a hydrant or an Edison box that's not centered on the lot.
Or drainage structure.
Pushed over or drainage structure, you're almost forced to flip them.
Flip them.
But we, with a little bit of planning, we might be able to get away with that condition.
All right, just so everybody knows, because we have a different ordinance in place from when this was previously done on. Okay, that's my only comment.
I would just add that we've met and talked about that in depth. The, um, he's finishing up the, the, um, last couple of lots of a development that was approved before this ordinance. And he's allowed to put in those driveways with a reduced setback or a reduced dimension right now, and so we've talked about it in depth.
But he's not allowed to put in reduced...
Not here, he's not, no, he's not.
Because this is before us today.
Correct, correct.
Right.
And your lot dimensions that you're reciting, um, I think there's a minimum of 90, and what we mean by that is at the building envelope. So if you go back 40 feet, as a, as a lot, it might show 78 at the street or the curb, but as you go back, you're running into a minimum of 90 feet. So I'm, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to build a house using your 25-foot pad and your 4-foot, uh...
Seven and a half.
No.
Four-foot driveway setback.
Oh, four-foot with a 25, excuse me.
So we'll have 29 feet plus another seven and a half on the other side, so I'm pretty confident we can build just about anything we want.
Yeah, they make plenty of narrow house plans, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I call them narrow house plans, I don't know what other terminology you use.
Well, the market's going to dictate the size of the house that goes in there, but I'm forecasting anywhere from 28 to 3,000 square feet.
So a courtyard entrance garage is the same as side entrance?
No, that would be allowed. Because what you do, your front elevation is showing windows as opposed to a garage door, that's usually the issue that concerns everybody. But I, I can imagine doing a courtyard garage.
Yeah, me too.
Does the topography allow for walkouts? Are there going to be walkouts along the lake?
Oh, I'm assuming everyone's going to be a walkout.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question on the safety path on Dunlap. And maybe Jack can help answer this. Based on where the property line ends, how much of a gap is going to be between the new safety path that they build and the one that's there from the township property line?
Probably just the ITC.
IT corridor. Didn't, didn't you continue through that?
It looks like you're in it halfway, if this Google map is correct.
We're in, I think we're in it halfway. We'll, we'll, we'll get with him on that.
Okay.
They'll connect.
Yeah, I, as I'm standing here without knowing the, the footage, I, I would almost agree that they should connect no matter what.
But it will stop short of West Bay Shore. Their property line does not technically go all the way up to West Bay Shore, there's a little bit of a gap there.
They're going to take it to West Bay Shore?
What's a little bit of a gap?
I'd have to look and see, I think it's like-
Feet of Dunlap.
20 feet, 50 feet.
Right.
Again-
The issue with it is if he connects it to West Bay Shore, he would have to put in ADA ramp. And the road commission is going to make us do an ADA ramp on the other side. Probably what we would do is the township would step in and say, hey, we'll pay for these additional improvements if we want to do that.
You're committed for the township?
We, we can address that before final site plan, because we'll have a safety path meeting and we'll go through this.
Right.
Because, but to be honest with you, this is a critical piece of the path. And with him putting in the majority of it, we, we need to barter back and forth. If you're not going to pave Dunlap, put the path in.
Yep.
Something like that.
And I don't think I'd have any problem with that. I don't want a dangerous condition, definitely not. My kids might be living in there.
Good.
Another question, rough timeline, what are you thinking?
Great question.
Jack wants the shovel ready.
We, we'd have to see some form of increase in the property value of lots. Right now, the cost of construction is more than the value of the lot. So if I can see that lot prices are increasing in the area to justify putting in close to $55,000 to $60,000 a lot for development, then we would go ahead in the spring. If not, it, it might be starting this time next year.
Okay. And I guess that may only last one point, and it's just something I noticed in the application. The, the tax bill you put in was from 2017, I'm assuming you're up to date on 18 and 19.
Oh, yes. Mr. Farrar will verify that.
I'm sure he will.
And should this be approved? How long is the approval for? Is it three, two?
For preliminary? Is there a system guide?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, one year. For you to come back for a final before planning.
Well, we definitely would be coming back for a final before that time. I mean, we're just going to proceed on engineering right through all this.
Just won't break ground.
Not sure.
I got you.
Anything else? Okay, then I'd look to, you have any questions for us?
None.
Okay. Then I'd look to the motion.
I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the matters of West Lake Site Condominium, parcel number, parcel ID 04-21-300-001, Zoned R1A, single-family residential applicant Carl Monaco. This recommendation of approval is based upon the following findings. The final site plan is consistent with township ordinances and the approved preliminary site plan. Further, this recommendation of approval is conditioned upon the following. Any unresolved items contained within the Township Planner's Review dated October 2nd, 2019. Any unresolved items contained in the Township Engineers' Review dated September 27th, 2019. And any additional unresolved items contained within the Fire Chief's Letter dated September 25th, 2019. End of motion.
Our second? It's moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Prove the item 11, communication reports and committee reports. EDC, you guys not met?
Well, we did meet, I can talk.
We did?
We kind of met. Okay, through the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, we had an ad hoc, just a meeting with Beaumont Hospital. And we've had a meeting with John Riley on the phone. And we've made written appeal to Senator Baer. We've made written appeal to the Governor Whitmer's office. And we've even asked our county commissioner to get involved with the county executive to determine why the certificate of need was denied, for the same reason that LAA was granted. Beaumont has got a lot of work into this and we're meeting with them again, continuing on as they are going to appeal that decision. So we're looking for all the help we can from our government partners and our citizens that, you know, this hospital is a good thing for Oxford.
Okay. That's it. Ordinance Review Committee?
Well, actually, what you have had in front of you tonight is pretty much some of the last works we, we did. From the last meeting we had, there is another meeting scheduled on the 24th, I, I probably won't be able to attend, but as long as the other parties can be there, I, I ask that they still move forward so we can, you know, keep going in the right direction.
All right, it's been some time because we took a lot, a lot of time on the
Yeah.
67?
Yeah.
Anyway, so my question is, you still have a list of things we're looking into and things that need change, correct?
Yes.
So when was the last time that priority list was submitted to, to Township Board?
Township Board.
Long time ago.
It was over a year ago.
Yeah.
I will say, we're still working within the scope of that because of the delays that were. But I would think that we probably around the beginning of the year would have some new items to move up on that, on that list.
Yeah, I suggest maybe sometime during, I don't know, next few meetings down the road that we as a commission decide what we really think we want to get done first, submit our priority list to the township and get them to, that way we can get budgetary requirements in January and whatever.
We, we can just bring in the list and show them everything that we have completed and where we're at and then where they want to continue.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a good idea.
Good. Okay, planner and engineer reports, anything else, Mr. Sharp?
Oh, first again, wow, going on a order, bud.
I'm going to give the last word to Lauren.
Um, give you a little update, Legacy Center. Last night, they were at the Township Board meeting requesting for an extension of their patio cafe, outdoor seating, I don't know, whatever you call it. But they were denied because they have so many outstanding items. Unresolved items, safety pass, things that you guys said, hey, we got to, we want to see this done, so the Township Board denied that. Jack already mentioned about the miscellaneous utility work that's going to be happening on M24, AT&amp;T, DTE, consumers. They got to get some work done ahead of the actual reconstruction project, so you're going to see some lane closures out there. Some temporary, some will actually have concrete barriers out there for a period of a couple of weeks while they move vaults and things like that. Majority of it's in the village, so, you know. But I thought we'd let everybody know about that, the public especially. And then, it's like you're going to have a couple of site plans coming through too, up on Excelsior Drive. So if you haven't been up there in a while, you might just want to familiarize yourself with the area. It's well and septic up there. Industrial slash commercial areas, but we have one in right now that Lauren and I, Lauren and I are in the process of reviewing and we've heard about another one coming through as well.
Good?
Yep. Other than that, that's all that we have right now. Thank you.
Lauren?
Thank you, Karen.
Last.
Would you talk about one other thing, though? We-
Yes?
You know, the filling station, the part?
Yeah.
That we're working on, we're trying to. And that's part, wouldn't that be part of that plan on Excelsior too, or not?
It's not, no, because that's on LaPierre and Adventure Lane.
Oh, the one on Adventure Lane?
Right, right, industrial zones.
No. Fuel, fuel.
Fuel filling.
Yeah, fuel.
Adventure.
I'm out of order, bud.
Hopeful, M24 Adventure Lane.
What we're, what we're dealing with is when we look at the industrial district and when we look at similarity of use and we looked at filling a station capacity, you know, capacity on those properties, it fits in with all the needs that could be met there, and we don't have a way in the ordinance to do it without going through it. Well, yeah, it could be, but we think that it fits, and so we're going to try to make an amendment in the ordinance to allow it as a permitted use under a special land use. That hasn't been brought in front of this committee yet, but I believe it fits. I mean, there's needs up there for it. I don't see a problem with it and.
That's, and that's along the lines of the schedule of uses that we're continually going through, is that the, the most recent thing that we've been looking at is industrial and office and, yeah. So we, the two agriculture that went to the board last night and this, we have been working on both of those for a long period of time. So we do have other things that we have talked about and we have begun, but we'll be bringing those further. So we have those. I will say, I concur with Jim, we do have a couple of site plans coming through and some activities still, still around for, for site plans and for new builds. We do, things are slowing down on the zoning compliance feature piece that I also play the role in, so ducks and things like that, so, but altogether, things are looking pretty good.
Yeah, because agriculture was just the very first schedule of uses we attempted. We have all the other.
We're hoping the rest of the times are better.
Hopefully. Okay, good. Thank you. With that, I'm going to close this meeting at 8:02. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.